Okay, this is the Eastline Board of Selectmen regular meeting of June 5th, 2024. We're in the East Line Town Hall Upper Meeting Room. And it looks like we're on the record at about 7:12. So can we rise and do the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
Okay. Are there any additional agenda or consent calendar items for tonight's meeting? I'm not aware of any. Anyone else? All right. Are there any delegations from the public this evening that wish to address the Board of Selectmen? No delegations. All right, being none, we'll move on. Attached are the minutes from the regular meeting of May 15th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 15th, 2024, and the special meeting minutes of May 28th, 2024 is submitted.
Okay. Do I hear a second? A little second.
Do we need to read them separately, though?
We're supposed to do them separately.
Yeah, I think we do. Let me redo it.
Yeah, redo your motion.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 15th, 2024 as submitted.
Do I hear a second? A little second. All right, thank you.
I have a correction. On page three, I am 4A. I misspoke. This was the report on the Historic Cemetery Commission. And next to the last sentence, let me see. No, it's the, wait a minute, I'm at the wrong section. Under Historic Cemetery Commission, that's halfway down the page, it says placing flags on pre-World War II graves, it should be pre-World War I.
Okay.
Just a minor correction.
Got it.
So that would also be on the second line also, or no?
Yes.
So pre-World War I and then after World War I?
Mm-hmm.
World War I to present. Okay. Thank you, Roseanne. Thank you, Roseanne. Any other changes or additions to the minutes? Being none, those in favor of accepting the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I voted yea. However, I did watch the video and I also read the minutes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the special meeting minutes of May 28th, 2024 as submitted.
Do I hear a second? A second. All right, thank you, Don. Any discussion on the minutes?
Should that be as corrected?
Well, these are the special meeting?
Okay.
Yeah. So are there any corrections to the special meeting minutes that we're aware of? Anyone wants to comment, Don? Well, then being none, those in favor of accepting the special meeting minutes of May 28th, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Likewise, I was not at the meeting. However, I did watch the video and I read the minutes.
Okay, thank you. So then, motion carries. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for June 5th, 2024 in the amount of $3,149.24.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. We'll tag Roseanne with that one. Okay, thank you, Roseanne. Any discussion? All right, being none, those in favor of approving the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone objecting? Any abstentions? Being none, motion carries. All right. Next on our agenda is new business, something we've been looking forward to. This is the presentation for the Yale Sharet Group, Niantic Main Street. And so they have the floor.
Good evening. Board of Selectmen, thank you for this time. I appreciate it. My name is Dan Walsh. I'm the president of the Niantic Main Street Organization. And I want to thank you guys for the time and the opportunity to speak about some of the work Niantic Main Street has been doing along with town officials, community stakeholders, and the Yale School of Urban Design. Over the past year, Yale has been a tremendous help. We're excited to share a high-level overview of what we heard through this process. We'd also like to share an immediate opportunity that we feel is worth your consideration. But first, a little background. In 1997, members of the community and town representatives came together to envisage a revitalized East Line, a vibrant place to live, work, and visit. People from a wide variety of perspectives met to share their experiences and hopes with the Yale Urban Design Workshop. Together, they created a blueprint for development in East Line that would foster the growth and character the town sought. The result of this work, the 1997 Yale Sharet Report, along with the 1999 Plan of Conservation and Development, helped guide planning and projects in town for more than two decades. In fact, the Niantic Main Street Organization was born from the Sharet Study, which emphasized the importance of an energetic and dedicated group of volunteers to help move concepts from the study phase to reality. Through the work of the town, local businesses, community members, and our organization, many improvements sparked by ideas in the report have come to fruition, from the streetscape downtown to the band shell at McCook Point Park, to the newest park at the end of Pennsylvania Avenue. That original report helped identify opportunities that the community then cultivated and made our own. Now, 25 years later, the Niantic Main Street Organization, with economic stimulus funding from the Federal American Rescue Plan, has once again engaged with Yale University's Urban Design Workshop to revisit and refresh the Niantic Main Street plan. Over the past many months, the Niantic Main Street Organization, East Line Town Officials, and Community Members have met with the Yale Urban Design Workshop to share ideas and explore leveraging downtown's key assets and its proximity to the water. This effort was made while keeping front of mind the importance of maintaining quality of life in the casual, friendly, and authentic feel of Niantic. The Niantic Main Street Organization is pleased to share these plans and bring new ideas into the realm of possible. Working with the town government and the many people who are part of the East Line community, we look forward to using this plan as a guide and inspiration to maintain and improve economically strong, culturally rich, beautiful, and welcoming downtown area. I'm joined by Alan Plattus, Andre Harwell, and Matthew Rosen from the Yale School of Urban Design. I'd like now to turn it over to Andre, who will provide a high-level overview along with his colleagues. Andre.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Andre Harwell. I'm an architect, urban designer, and urban planner. And I just wanted to start by thanking Dan and the Main Street Organization, along with all of the residents, business owners, and stakeholders that we've been able to interact with during this process. As Dan said, this is actually the second time we're here in Niantic thinking about the Main Street area. But I want to back up for a minute. I run something along with Alan Plattus and Matt Rosen, my colleagues, called the Yale Urban Design Workshop. We are a community design center, which is affiliated with the Yale School of Architecture, where we all teach as well. That's the building actually up here in the image on the right. Quite a famous building, much loathed and much loved, depending on your point of view. But actually, our offices are a bit down the street in a neighborhood in New Haven called the Dwight Neighborhood. And we tend to occupy rooms that are much more like this one, where we sit and interact with neighborhood folks and try to understand what their needs and desires are and how we might help them both visualize and act and enact on those needs and desires. We've worked all around the state of Connecticut. We've been around for 32 years. Alan actually founded the office when he was the Associate Dean of the School of Architecture. And we've worked on a variety of different kinds of plans, from things like a plan for Fort Trumbull in 2008 to the development of the Thames River Heritage Park just down the coast here. We started this project about two and a half years ago, I believe, with a meeting with Dan and some of his colleagues walking down Main Street and talking about what the next stage of development might be here, having fulfilled many of the kinds of recommendations that were made in that plan from the late 1990s. So with that, I want to turn it over to Matt Rosen, who's going to give you a high-level overview of the plan. If we haven't already, we'll share the detailed document with you, but I think we want to go through this rather quickly to give you a sense for what it encompasses. Matt?
Thank you, Andre. Thank you, everyone, for being here and giving us the opportunity to share this really exciting work that we've been doing for the last two years, one and a half years. So these are some really lovely postcards, historic and contemporary, from Niantic. You might recognize some of them. Niantic's all about the water. You can see it in these postcards. You can see it when you walk down the street. It's a lovely, charming, full-of-character place. And in thinking about the place and thinking about the identity of Niantic, speaking with everyone here, we have come to a number of planning principles that we feel will reinforce Niantic's existing and powerful identity. So those are listed here. I'll quickly go through them. The first one being strengthening connections to water. But this is not just about physical connections, like hole-in-the-wall. It's also about cultural connections and visual connections, really any opportunity to strengthen any kind of connection to water. Building on distinctive identity of the retail environment, thinking about how the town serves both residents and also people coming here, strengthening the pedestrian activity in the town, how to balance car traffic and people traffic, and then in that way consolidating parking and thinking about issues of parking downtown, especially in the high season. And of course, it's a very historic place. There's a lot to be said about the history of Niantic as a village. And so one of the things that we're interested in doing is understanding that history relative to changing conditions, changing environments, the need to update or to move forward. So one of the first things we do in projects like this is an analysis of an urban structure, what we call an urban structure. And this is something of a formal analysis, so it's an understanding of distances, it's an understanding of movement through a town or through an area. And Niantic has a very clear and really highly rich, really rich urban structure, which provides a lot of opportunities. So there's a clarity along Main Street and its connections to various water bodies. Also, you can see in this map and this diagram, we have three different water bodies. We have the river, the bay, and Dodge Pond, of course. So it all centralizes around the Main Street District. And we thought about this condition as a series of focus zones. So we've identified five of these focus zones, which the report takes on. I'm going to go into a high-level review of a couple of them, or four of them, and then we're going to get a little bit into more detail on the fifth. But those districts are Main Streets, Hole-in-the-Wall, Marina Gateway, Dodge Pond, and the Cultural Core. So in regards to Main Streets, it's really, part of the focus of the plan is thinking about traffic in the downtown district, how cars move, how people move, some of the issues of movement. I think we've all had the experience of walking down Main Street and seeing a car go by a little bit too fast or not knowing, when you're in the car, where to park or how to navigate. And those are issues of urban design. So some of the things we're suggesting in this Main Street District are moving away in some ways from a heavily auto-oriented traffic pattern and condition along Main Street and centralizing parking on the inner block. So you can see in this visioning diagram, this visioning drawing, a centralization of parking in the mid-block, which can allow the streetscape to become more walkable and allows businesses to have more activity along the street, including possible opportunities for outdoor dining and other forms of engagement. In addition to the benefits to the pedestrian, there's also benefits to the traveler coming by car. So right now, there's a lot of curb cuts along Main Street. You may know there's a lot of accesses into different parking lots. And what that means when you're walking is that, you know, you've got to look both ways often. What that means when you're driving is, especially if you're not from here, you're not sure actually where to park, if you're going to Hole-in-the-Wall or if you want to go to the Marina. It's not very clear. And so part of this strategy is to centralize that location and make it very clear for a visitor where they should go and make it a kind of central location. Centralizing the parking also gives this added benefit of possible strategic and modest infill development along the existing parking lots that are on Main Street, so potentially opening up the opportunity to have light development if need be. So Main Street, of course, linking to Hole-in-the-Wall as a really important and key access to the water. We're envisioning Hole-in-the-Wall as a kind of, the opportunity there is a public space, actually, on both sides of the passageway. So one of the issues again here is wayfinding. How do we have visitors understand how to get to the boardwalk and how to get to Hole-in-the-Wall? It's not very clear currently. As someone who has come here for the first time in this project a year and a half ago, I knew Hole-in-the-Wall existed, and it took me a couple of minutes to figure out how to get there. And so the idea here is to create a new pedestrian access via the train tracks down to the land side of the underpass or the pass-through and create a new public plaza, which also links through Hole-in-the-Wall to a new pier, which we're proposing to be an extension of the breakwaters, which can start to link public activity from the water, from the boardwalk, up to Main Street, which we envision as a lovely and active part of the summer condition, but also something that drives traffic to local businesses and helps clarify the way that residents and visitors can use this area of the town. The third focus area that we'll talk about is Marina Gateway. And so Marina Gateway, it's at the moment slightly detached from the Main Street District. There's a real opportunity to increase access via Grand Street, make a more walkable streetscape so that there's both ways and access. So from Main Street, if one is visiting or residents who park in a maybe a more centralized future parking structure, there can be an easy way to travel to the harbor, the Marina. And also for visitors, we're imagining increased day slips. So, you know, if you're coming by boat, you can also park for the day, walk down to Main Street, go to Hole-in-the-Wall, and come back. So this is really about connecting bodies of water. It's about connecting activity through the town. It's about bringing the town together. I mean, there's really not much physical distance between these places. It's very walkable in terms of distance, but in terms of pleasure of that walk, there's a lot that could be improved. The last focus zone we'll talk about in high level here is Dodge Pond. Dodge Pond similarly is cut off in some ways from these other zones downtown, and we see this as a huge opportunity. The town already owns access points to Dodge Pond, which are seen here. It's actually in the back of us right now, I'm not sure everyone's aware. But the opportunity here is to make this more known to people visiting and to residents also, allow easy access by potentially building either more walkable streets or along Pennsylvania Avenue, a kind of better walking condition. We also identified an opportunity to create an industrial heritage park along the train tracks that are currently leading to the Lumber Yard. And so maybe down the line or in some kind of temporary way, produce a linear park that can connect downtown to Dodge Pond. So Andre mentioned, and also Dan mentioned, that there's an imminent opportunity here. And I'm sure some of you are aware of this. The location across the street from the Niantic Bay Playhouse, the theater, is the police station site. We call this the Cultural Core. We're really building on what's been done at the Niantic Bay Playhouse already, the really great work in reusing that building and taking it on as a cultural hub in the Main Street District. And across the street from that, in the middle image here, you can see the police station site. So the opportunity here, of course, it's right next to the water. It's central on Main Street. And we see, we can envision a host of different possibilities with this site, including creating a connection to the theater across Main Street through a traffic table, which would slow traffic on Main Street more broadly. But the traffic table, if you're not aware, is a raised crosswalk, basically, which is very effective in both slowing traffic and creating pedestrian safety. And this traffic table connection across Main Street would lead into a possible multi-use public plaza, which on the ground level could be retail and public restrooms, other amenities, and above be either private or public housing or restaurants, other retail conditions. We also imagine because of its location that it can have a second-story overlook, which would give visual access to the bay. So right now, short-term, this is the condition, this is what we have, and we would say the Cultural Core is already seated because of the use through the Niantic Bay Playhouse. What we imagine what could happen next is light development on the site. I mean, also reusing the building is possible, a number of possibilities there, but effectively using the underused space and bringing people to this side of the street. In time, a potential public plaza could emerge and an active downtown connection could be made. So the extension of the pedestrian infrastructure has a lot of opportunity to extend outwards into the downtown district, making for a much more usable and pleasant experience in moving across Main Street. The plaza, I mean, there's so many events. I was looking on the board earlier before I was here. This could be an incredible site for those events. It could be on days where it's an average day, a place where food trucks come and use that space. On a special day, it could be where large community gatherings happen. We imagine it could be active at night with night markets or other types of activity. During the day, you know, it's a very versatile space and it's central. Bordering that public plaza, what we're seeing here are two buildings. On the ground floors, you can see very open and accessible structure. And just to say that these are not really designs, these are kind of gestures towards possibility. And so all of this would have to be designed, but what we're kind of imagining and what we're thinking through is a response to what we've heard from the town. And what we've heard is that there's a need for retail, there's a desire for retail space, and a desire for public restrooms. And so these would potentially provide that as well as a second-story access for outdoor dining or other views. So as I said, we didn't, part of the planning process, we don't design these things. We think about what's possible. And so here is what, there's a couple of options that we've sort of laid out here just to give you a sense of the range of possibilities. So there's an existing police station building in red here, and you can see in the bottom of the drawing kind of cutting through the site where the trains are moving back and forth. So one alternative is a park or a public plaza on the Main Street side and a kind of deck, really light structure. It could be very low-touch. Something a little bit more robust with keeping some of the existing structure in place and having a second-story observation deck, something larger where there could be more development space and more housing potentially added, restaurant square footage or other retail uses. So somewhere in the range of possibilities, we imagine that this active and vibrant area of Main Street could provide really, really great use for residents and for visitors for years and years. And, you know, incredible access to the water, incredible access to an already burgeoning cultural institution, and the ability to potentially mitigate some of the wayfinding and traffic issues that are present. This is a view from that second story, looking back across Main Street at the community theater or the Niantic Bay Playhouse with an active and engaging plaza in the foreground. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions or discussion. As Andre mentioned, there's a full document, which is available. If you want to get into any of the details, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, please. I just want to reiterate how great it's been working with Yale over the past, I don't know, how many, many months.
When you first came to you after COVID.
Yeah.
That it was.
I was impressed with, obviously, their vision. They travel the world, they do this, they see it, and they kind of knew the answers, but let us get there together, which made the process more, yeah, so kudos to them. Thank you very much. So I just wanted to make one comment before we open up questions, and that's, there was a repeated concern we heard in these focus groups. And that was, we don't want to overdevelop Niantic. You know, we don't want to be Mystic or Stonington. Nothing against them, but we have our own authentic feel here, and it's real, you know? And the other side of that is, we also don't want this to just happen the way it may happen if left to the open market. So I think the message I would like you to get from this whole presentation is, we'd like to do something to kind of get involved in what the future looks like. And obviously, you don't eat an elephant in one bite, and it's going to take time. But hopefully, together, as we have with Yale and the rest of the community, we can work through these really extraordinary concepts. And I like your thought, their visions of opportunity, something like that. So anyway, I guess we do Q and A now? If anyone has any questions.
Dan, first, I appreciate the patience that you guys are willing to take on for this project because this is huge. But we spoke about taking ownership of the police department building. Can you elaborate a little bit, some of your thoughts there, how to do that, the best way to do that?
Yeah, so we met with Dan, and I think we have until next, I don't know if there is a deadline for making a decision.
There is, but it's not next week, but we have to start really seriously thinking about it.
Yeah, so I think it's going to be a process, and I think what's going through everybody's head might be, what if this property needs excessive or a lot of remediation, for example? I know CLMP was there. We met with George Mitchell today, and he gave us a little bit of his knowledge on the history of that space. But there may be some remediation that's necessary, and it's going to take funding. One of our members, Colleen Gresh, has been engaged with the Landmark Association?
Can I get around the little land bank?
Land bank.
It's just initial conversations, but there are opportunities.
So there are grant opportunities, essentially. They talked about paying up to 90% of the cost of that remediation through their process. So I think we have solutions. And to your point, Don, it's going to take some time. Niantic Main Street has already offered, and we're happy to pay for the initial Phase One study, which is really just involves paperwork, going to the town hall, looking through records as to historically what was there. We're happy to pay for that, put our own stake, you know, put our stake in the ground on that, so. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. The grant opportunities, is that from the state? You would be getting the grants? I couldn't hear.
Colleen, you want to come up?
I can.
No.
I'll push come up.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. It's hard to hear.
She is our grant expert, so I don't want to.
I'm trying my best.
If you could just say your name on the record.
Yeah, my name is Colleen Gresh. I'm a resident of East Line. Yeah, these are very initial conversations. And so just to back it up a little bit, the Connecticut, I'm trying to understand this legislation that was put through about the land banks that are able to go and take, kind of shepherd the process for these brownfield sites that are around the state. And so I had an initial conversation with them. There's some money, not necessarily yet for the remediation process, but possibly for the initial study. But they have the expertise that could probably guide us through the grant processes. And there is, there are funds available for a brownfield remediation, but I don't want to lead us to believe that we're at a stage yet where I could say there's 90% that would be available for anything like that yet. We would have to conduct the initial study. They have some expertise in that area and could help us in that area. We could apply to them for a grant that would do that. That would actually fit kind of well with our timeline because that would be something we need to do in their July session so that they could begin working on that in October. Again, very quick conversation that I had with them, so we would need to investigate that a little bit more and reach out to them. And then from there, they can assist us also in identifying grants and also assist us in, I believe, if I have it correct, that they can assist us in the grant writing process. There's costs associated with them, but there's also funding associated with those opportunities, too.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that. I have one more, please. On your drawing, you went through kind of quick, it was, parking is an issue. I didn't see where the plan was for parking. If you could show that slide.
Sure, so, that was in the early phase, so this isn't really as directly to do with the police station site.
Right.
Though, of course, it affects it, if you don't mind me flipping around a moment. Yeah, so, here it is, this is the Main Street's focus zone. And as, this is, I mean, to get into a little bit more detail on this particular area, what we did was to first assess the various constraints and challenges with this block, this mid-block on Main Street, and to kind of produce a phased sequence that would help remedy some of the problems that we've been hearing about. One of the problems we've been hearing about is parking, that people don't know where to park, or there's not enough parking. When there is parking, it's not in the right place, or it's owned by someone who doesn't want you to park there, and they're not sure, you know, there's all of these issues that I'm sure you're all very familiar with. So, our solution to that, or a possible proposal, is to centralize the parking in the mid-block. And you can see, I don't know if my cursor works. Oh, oh no. Let's see if I. Okay, we're back, I'm not going to move the cursor. The, right in the center of the drawing, you can see a second-level parking deck. And so, that's a possible solution to densify parking through a multi-level parking structure. What we've done, you can also see along Main Street, the darker blue kind of perimeter hatch, which is a sidewalk. It doesn't have as many curb cuts, so it's really only one curb cut. And the curb cut is right where that little arrow is pointing into the, into the parking deck, which goes also over to Hope Street. And so, the idea here is that we're creating a much clearer access to a centralized parking area, which can have the capacity to host as many cars as a kind of traffic study would say is needed. And by doing that, we open up all kinds of possible opportunities, including, you know, creating outdoor dining spaces in the perimeter parking lots along Main Street, creating a more habitable and walkable streetscape, possibly producing a clearer use of that area. And so, yeah, that's kind of the crux of the gesture in this area, or one of the possibilities.
Thank you.
So, my question is, you were talking about the parking. Is that going to block, like, either apartments or people's views to, if they have it of the water? Or, I can't really tell exactly where it is on this map, and so, I just don't know if, you know, we're opening up a can of worms, so to speak.
Right, so, again, just to reiterate, these are not designs, these are ideas, which would have to be designed. And so, the specific requirements of the parking structure that may or may not get built in this area would, you know, dictate those possibilities. Though, it's important to say that, right now, this is open parking. We're not talking about, it's a wide and open lot in the middle of the block. That's partly owned by the Mitchell Trust, and then there's a small part that's owned by the town. And so, it's not demolishing an existing structure to put in parking. It's where the parking already is, densifying.
Okay, got it, thank you. And then, the other question I had, and I don't even know, you can answer this, but Dodge Pond. And I was a ex officio at a zoning meeting, and they were talking about the Tricus property being developed there.
Yeah.
Would that impact this development, do we know? Any ideas?
No, because the town has access to Dodge Pond, that's what we're talking about, not where the developments are.
So, there's other access to Dodge Pond.
There's other access, okay. All right, that's, because I, yeah, I just wasn't sure, and I'm hearing a lot about Dodge Pond lately, so, okay. I'd like to thank you guys, I think, you know, it's very thorough, and you can tell a lot of work went into it. It gives a lot of, a lot of things to think about, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, I'm new to like these meetings, but, so, am I allowed to comment or ask a question?
Are you part of the presentation, or?
I'm part of Main Street.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, while you're just identifying, just use the podium.
Sure, yeah, and business, business owner in town, too.
Hi, my name is Laura Westner, owner of Coastal Gifts on Main. At your first, at their first presentation, just to address the parking thing, even without building a parking garage, I thought one of the best suggestions I ever heard was to repaint or paint, I don't even know if it is painted right now, that whole area behind the movie theater where La Llorona is, behind Niantic Main Street, I mean, Public House. And I think you guys said they could, we could easily get like 55 more spaces back there if it was just repainted and redrawn out.
Reconfigured somehow.
Reconfigured so that parking spaces were more aware, I mean, like, it was more aware of where parking was. But again, it's a little messy because some of it is privately owned by the Mitchells, some of it is town-owned, so that would just be one of the considerations, I guess. So, I just wanted to bring that up because that was what they talked about at the first meeting, and I thought that was genius because I agree, I think that that parking lot back there has no direction and no common sense back there. So, I think that would be an initial help to do that, so.
Good point.
Yeah, okay.
And maybe just to build on that quickly, that's in the report, that suggestion, as well as a provisional layout, which would not preclude the possibility of building a denser parking structure over that restriped lot later. So, it's a layered and possibly starting point for something like this. What we're showing here is a kind of maximalist vision.
Do you think, have any comments?
I have questions, but I think they're so preliminary right now.
Yeah. Who's that?
I'm also, thank you.
John Schweizer, I live in Niantic, I was on the Niantic Main Street Board for 15 years, still am, I think. But, one thing that we're very good at is fundraising. When there's a purpose, for the previous Sharet survey, we stepped up, we got the community involved, we got things done. I don't know if this is going to cost a dollar or $100,000 to get this started at least. But one thing to consider is, we have a great community, a great team on Niantic Main Street, and we will all pull together to make something work for the next 25 years. Thank you.
No more questions.
So, I would just, a question and comment. Comment is, you know, I remember when the first Sharet came out, and what was it, '97, right? And there was a lot there, and I thought, oh, how is this ever going to happen? And yet, so many, over time, so many features got done. Like you said, the band shell, the streetlights, some of the other things. It really, at the time, people didn't appreciate just how much that was going to add to the, to Main Street and the feel of it. And all of that was a success, I think. And so, there's a lot here, it's a challenge, it's, you know, something to look forward to. And, yeah, we're not going to be able to do everything, but I think we have to pick a starting point and figure out, you know, prioritize, you're talking about phases. And of course, the most immediate thing we have to look at is the Dominion Building on Main Street, and just figure out what are our goals, can we do it, should we do it? And if we do it, take title to it, what's the plan for it? And this will help us, you know, form that idea and those impressions and goals. The other thing that I noticed, what isn't on this view, but you had a, looked like a dock coming off of the jetty opposite the hole in the wall. And, you know, I looked at the plan, you had, you know, given me a, or a black and white copy at some point, and I never noticed that. But, you know, a lot of people have boats and they like boats, but they want to have a place to go. They want, I got this boat, I want to go somewhere, and I want to just go out and come right back in. And there are people that, if you build a dock or a facility that is a destination, there's going to be a lot of commerce and vitality that flows from it. Yeah, there you go. And so, I don't know what the exact idea or plan is for that or the feasibility of it, but certainly, that, and then the other park on the other side, in your Cheney Park, there was, you know, maybe another opportunity. And if we could, you know, really start thinking about that, I think that the commerce that comes from it will help propel some of these other ideas and help us to fund our goals on Main Street. So, I think that was really an interesting idea, and I think we really have to look seriously at this presentation. I want to thank you very much, there's a lot of great ideas and great effort, and, you know, the last one really, really did a lot for the town, and I think this one will too, so, thank you. Any other comments, or? I appreciate very much your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Be honest, we'll have it all done by next week, I think.
We look forward to it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you again. Okay. And an equally interesting part of our agenda is approval of departmental transfers. Can you help me with that, Kevin?
Okay, wait, can I make a motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Ready, okay. Move to ratify departmental transfers in the amount of $460,923.31 processed for fiscal year end, June 30th, 2024, and move forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Okay, do I hear a, do I hear a second?
I will.
Okay, we have a second. Discussion, Kevin, you can shed some light on these transfers?
Yeah, absolutely. Everyone can just see my back from here. But, all right, so, these are just transfers from each of the departments. I think we were here about two months ago, so these transfers go through. We also picked up some transfers we missed the first time around, if you remember. We did that initial transfer. So, a lot of these are housekeeping items and to cover some salaries and other, you know, things that kind of happened throughout the year. So, some of the larger ones there, the first from the curator at Brookside Farm, last budget cycle, we only put $6,000 in the budget. They asked us to reconsider and put the full amount in, and we said, we'll cover from contingency when you hire somebody, and then a day later, they hired somebody. Audit fees is a big one down here. As everyone knows, we are in fiscal year '24, but we are completing.
Where is this worksheet?
It should be in your, it was in the packets.
Do you have it?
Let me share mine.
Here.
I have, I brought an extra one.
Yeah, if you have an excellent one, you can sit down. I haven't had the one that you gave me, I don't think you got. No, no, you're fine.
Okay, why don't you two share this, and Anna and I will share the other, how's that?
Yeah, perfect, I'm good.
Dan, you okay, you got one?
Yes, sir.
I got an extra one here.
He's going to give downward, so we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, if we want to, on the first page there, about eight down is the $19,500 for the curator. The other larger ones, the audit fees, as I was previously mentioning, we're in fiscal year '24, but we just finished, we're wrapping up '22's audit, we're going to work in '23's audit. These audits are about $80,000 apiece now, we budgeted $60,000. So, I have to make up the difference here by moving money from contingency as these bills keep coming, right?
Wait, Kevin, just a quick question. Where is the curator, I was just trying to.
It's the other page. These are two pages.
Oh, these are two pages.
Oh, all right, we only had.
Do we recess, do we get any copies or something?
Do you mind? Yeah. Yeah. Take a quick break.
Let's just move to take a five-minute recess, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, we're going to take a break for a couple of minutes.
All right.
All right. 10:04, 8:04. Okay, it's approximately 8:04, we're back on the record, and we're going to continue going through the agenda and the departmental transfers. We all have copies now of the spreadsheet. Thank you, Kevin.
All righty, now that we all have copies, as previously mentioned, the larger ones here, curator, $19,000, $19,500. Last budget year, we met with the commission over there, they told us they were in conversations with hiring a curator, and we said we would cover that with payroll contingency, that's why it says PR contingency, if they hired somebody, and they did. So, we're here to cover the rest of that salary. Anyone have any questions there? Going down a little further, the $20,800, that is to cover the audit fees for fiscal year 2022. You'll see later, there's also another charge as well. Vehicle maintenance from Flanders, we've talked about that already, that was actually, that was specially approved, so that one's good. Dispatch, we moved $20,000 from part-time dispatchers to the overtime line, based on the new contract language over there, that full-time dispatchers get first rate refusal for overtime shifts. That pretty much wiped out part-time dispatchers as the full-timers love overtime.
So, wait, just to clarify, this isn't expending money, this is just transferring.
Transferring budget dollars to cover anticipated expenses through year end.
Okay.
Right, so, the reason why we are doing this tonight, we're going to get the Board of Finance next week, and then move the ones that have to to the town meeting on July 3rd. So, that is our plan here. Most of it's run-of-the-mill, we'll flip to page two, we'll see park and rec, part-time seasonal labor, conversations with Mr. Locken, the, Locken, Jerry, the Park and Rec Director. We had a little more part-time use last year with some vacancies and extra work needed to be performed at the end of the season last year, so we moved $15,000 over there to help them with this spring to get their part-timers started before July 1. Two other ones I will mention, $30,000 right there again for CLA, our audit firm, and then one at the very bottom there, $15,000 for out-of-scope audit services. So, what that is, is prior period adjustments from fiscal year 2020, 2021. Those numbers were on very solid footing, so the auditors and I did a prior period adjustment. So, that's all out-of-scope work, that wasn't anticipated, and that's about $15,000.
Just a quick question, when you said that there was the PT for the seasonal labor.
Correct.
Is that additional hours or people that were hired then?
Jerry, would you like to speak to that? Your part-time seasonal labor line? And we've had a conversation with Dan, but I will let Jerry speak to that. Okay.
Say that again, Ann.
I was just trying to understand, is this like additional people that have been hired to work up through, I guess, it's, you know, the end of this fiscal year?
Yes, the amount that we transferred in is enough to cover us through, now through June 30th.
Okay, so, would that be, it's part-time people?
They're seasonal people that we hired, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And then, two others to discuss, general government. We moved money right there from the retirement liability, we have, we're going to have some excess monies there to cover, you know, legal bills. There was a charter revision earlier this year that really wasn't budgeted in the budget, so that's kind of what, kind of has to absorb some of that. And then.
What, Kevin, what is eviction moving?
You're in first page or second page?
Under general government, page, I guess it's page one.
So, the town's obligated, and I know Joe can speak to this because it kind of falls under his department, but I'll give it a best shot, give me a thumbs up if I do a good job there. But evictions, the town's responsible, when there's an eviction in town, for moving the items out of that house and putting them in either a storage container, or what we ended up doing was buying a metal, what do they call it?
Container.
Metal container, like a shipping container. It's sitting at the transfer station with a lock on it, so when someone gets evicted, we move their stuff into there as opposed to a storage facility, and then we work with them to collect their belongings or whatever happens.
So, then, do they end up paying for the storage or the moving of their?
No. No. No, it's the town responsibility. That's why it's the transfer station, so it's there. Is that it? You good?
Okay.
You guys good?
Okay.
It's at the transfer station, one-stop shop. You don't pick it up, we move it over.
Pretty much.
So, does anyone have any questions, any inline items? The rest of the things are just run-of-the-mill, you know, a couple hundred dollars here, maybe a thousand dollars here or there.
Flanders Fire Vehicle Maintenance?
With the $40,000. That one was the one we approved in the last town meeting.
Okay.
So, my apologies for putting that one in there.
Yep.
Thank you. Any further concerns or discussions? All right, then, all in favor of the bunch of transfers, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Being none, the motion carries.
Was there a motion to, to make this happen?
Yes, I did the motion.
She did the motion, yeah.
And then we kind of had to take a break from the paperwork.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have item C, appointments to boards and commissions.
Move to appoint Alicia San Giorgio Brothers of 149 Roxbury Road, Nyannick, to serve as a member on the Parks and Recreation Commission for the Town of East Lime, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
I second that.
We have a second. Any, any discussion?
I wonder if Ms. Locken might comment on this? Is this, it's not a person I'm familiar with. This is for Parks and Rec, is this correct?
Yeah, she, she put a letter in.
I read the letter.
Okay.
So, Jerry Locken, Park and Rec Director. Actually, Roseanne, I try not to have any opinion at all on who's on the commission. I served the commission, so it's really not for me to say, but I will say that the members of the commission at the last meeting wholeheartedly supported her name being forwarded to the Board of Selectmen for appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
I could also comment, just knowing her for better part of two decades at this point, which is being a good, smart person who works really hard and will be an asset to the Parks and Recreation.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Being none, the motion carries.
Move to appoint Ronald Johnson of 11 Town Road, Nyannick, to serve as a member on the Harbor Management and Shellfish Commission for the Town of East Lime, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second now.
All right, great. Any discussion? Good fill. Good, good spot. Really good guy.
He was a harbor master one time.
Yeah, I've heard, I've only heard good things.
I was ex officio when he was the harbor master. He was, yeah, he was excellent, and I think he would have stayed on, but it was too much. So I think it's, I was really happy when I saw his name on this, that he wants to still be part of it, because I think he can really do, add a lot of value.
That's great. All right, any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, being none, motion carries. And I thank you, Ron, for willing to be here. Appreciate it. Next is a special appropriation. Do we have a motion?
Sure.
It's 120, so we'll revise. It's 120. Okay?
I'm looking, hang on one second.
That's going to be two, two D.
Kevin, there's, there's no amount in here. Do you want me to put in a amount? 120,000? Okay, got it. Okay. Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of 120,000 to transfer any funds remaining at the conclusion of the ARPA-funded projects, 85-70-007-700-705, playscape improvements, McCook slash Parets, 85-70-007-700-706, water fountains and parks, and 85-70-007-700-707, restroom enhancement, parks, to a new ARPA-funded project for park improvement and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jason. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstaining? Being none, the motion carries. All right, next one is a special appropriation.
Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $19,176.67 to purchase two new highway plows from CNRE line 32-30-400-700-999, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Roseanne. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstaining? None, so motion carries. Do you want someone else to do the next one? You okay?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Move to reallocate $187,000 for the Boston Post Road Tank Project, account number 85-70-007-700-711, and $8,000 from the Well 5A WTP Upgrade Project, account number 85-70-004-700-004, for a total amount of $195,000 to be transferred into an account to be created and titled, quote, "Well 4 and Well 1A/6 PFAS Removal Project, to assist in the design, engineering, and procurement of equipment related to the removal of PFAS from East Lime water sources, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting."
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Roseanne. Any, any discussion?
Would this be impacted by the recent presidential action on removing PFAS from drinking water and municipal supplies?
Good question. So, let's see, oh, can you take that, Ben? Great, thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ben North, I'm Chief Operating Officer at East Lime Water and Sewer. And yes, to answer your question, the process of getting federal funding is something that we're working on right now, and this, this funding that we're requesting is going to allow us to do a preliminary engineering report that allows us to access those funds. So this, these are kind of the stepping stones that are required for us to even be able to access that kind of funding.
You got to spend money to make money, that kind of thing.
Yeah, exactly.
Seed, seed money in a sense, right?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so we, it's state revolving fund money that is, is awarded by the federal government to the states, and then you have to go through the process to be able to access those funds.
A question.
This process.
Maybe it's impossible to answer, but pending the election in a couple months, could that program be quickly dissolved, and we lose out on the money we're putting out there?
It's hard to say, but currently, the state still has money available from the last tranche that was awarded, so, you know, we should be able to get some of that money as well. You know, we're, we're looking at possibly getting a decision by November, so that, that money would already be in the state's hands at that time.
Okay.
You know, it may impact additional monies, but we're looking, not only are we looking for the funding source through the SRF funding program, which is typically a 2% loan, we also may be eligible for some subsidy as well.
So this is to study the programe, to study the problem, but not necessarily to remediate it?
No, we, the, so we're working on preliminary engineering report right now, and that, this is going to fund that report. You know, I expect eight to 10 million dollars will be needed to fully remove PFAS from our system, you know, based on the construction of new facilities in order to filter PFAS from our system.
How much did you say?
Eight to 10 million dollars. Yeah. Yeah, this is not in expectations, but this is the first step in order for us to, to access those funds, like I said, in, mostly in the form of a loan. There may be some subsidy, but these, these are typically loans.
Well, we'll think of this every time we drink our water from a plastic bottle.
Yes.
At least there's a process available to solve the problem.
Yeah, yeah, this will allow us to, to fund that study, and allow us to purchase some equipment that we know that we're going to need to fund the upgrade process, and, and also pave the way for the, the large loan that we're going to be able to hopefully access towards that construction process.
Do you think there's any possibility of a government class action suit against the manufacturers who continue to use these?
There was, there was one previously that was done, but it really only covered about 10% of the cost of treatment, and it was done well in advance of a program that the EPA enacted called Unregulated Containment Amendment Rule 5, which required all water utilities in the country to start testing for PFAS. So that, that class action lawsuit had already passed by before most water utilities even knew of their findings, including us. So we opted, to opt out of that class action lawsuit, because that would have removed our ability to, to go into another class action lawsuit in the future, when those types of containment levels are better understood, and there could be another lawsuit in the future for that purpose.
Thank you.
Yep.
And how long, if you know, would the study take once you...
So, we're hoping that the, the study will be finished sometime this summer. Kind of with this funding, we'll be able to finish the, the study up, and we'll go through a QBS qualitative bid selection process, where we can choose our engineer, and then we, we submit all of that after we've picked our engineer and preliminary engineering report to the state, and then the state can then act on awarding money.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
The big, the big money that is going to be spent, once you have the study done, to buy the stuff to, to treat...
Right.
Is that, can be used in other applications? Should we discover more?
No, unfortunately, that would only be used for the designated purpose that we're applying for, but we've tested all of the wells in town now. We've actually tested them twice now, so we're very comfortable with the findings that we have. You know, that's not to say, you know, something years down the road could change that, but certainly from where we're looking at, perspective from now, that we, we have a good understanding where our contaminants are located.
Thank you. So we have a pretty good scope of understanding of the exposure.
Yeah, yep.
And, and just to clarify a little more, I mean, right when I took over, that was when we had to make the decision on the class action suit, and we gave some thought to it and tried to get the best advice that we could, and we opted out because we really didn't know, first of all, if we had a problem.
Right.
And then if we had joined the lawsuit, the recovery really was pretty stingy, and, and now that we're finding out what the costs are, I think we absolutely made the right decision to opt out.
Yeah.
And that gives us the flexibility either to file an independent lawsuit or join a future class action if we, if it should become viable.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I think we, we did good on that one, and let's see where we go from here. Thank you, Ben. It's a great question, Jason. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any further discussion? All right. If not, for those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None? Abstain? None? Motion carries.
Move to appropriate $5,480.80 to a line to be established in the Capital Non-Recurring Fund, parentheses, Fund 32, and parentheses, for the purpose of procuring a new freezer at the community center, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any, any discussion on this? Sounds like a good purchase for them. Yeah, very important for what they do over there. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none. Any abstentions? Being none. Motion carries. You're doing all right, you're doing a lot, you have reason to these things.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
No, you don't get...
Do you want me to, I, I need to read all these, right? Like, in detail?
Let's see, this goes on and on.
Yeah, can we do that by, what's your thought, Kevin, on that?
I think you need to be read in.
Resolution, don't you?
Oh, okay, hang on.
I think we just have a...
The resolution? All right, hang on.
And then do as attached.
All right, let me, let me just find it.
Is that covering it?
Yeah, if you don't mind, if I could just steal...
Here's the whole packet.
So we just, here's the resolution. This is the resolution. Which one do I want?
Okay.
Oh, here, I think this is the resolution.
Just go over there.
I think this is.
Where are you? The resolution, no.
Introduction, that's the file.
Hold on, man.
Because of the size of the amount of money being appropriated, and wanting to, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is, should we read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Do you want me to take part of it?
I just want to, let me just figure out... Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to.
I have the resolution here that's in, I don't know if this is...
All right, let me grab that. I'm sorry, it just...
Your phone?
I think that was the part for, I think this is all you need, 2H.
And then all of this?
Yeah. And then, then we can take turns reading the rest of this.
Okay, that's fine. All right, I'll start.
Don't be, when you get tired, then we'll...
Okay.
Jason will take over, and I'll...
I've got my reading glasses.
All right. Ready?
Yeah.
Resolution making appropriations aggregating $3,735,000 for various public improvements and authorizing the issuance of $3,735,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Resolve, section one, the sum of $3,735,000 is hereby appropriated by the Town of East Lime, Connecticut, parentheses, the town, for the planning, design, acquisition, and construction of various public improvements here and after listed, including costs of legal, administrative, and related costs, parentheses, the projects. Project assessment, revaluation reserve, $75,000. These are estimated amounts. IT radio tower replacement cost, $100,000. Emergency management, public safety radio tower, $300,000. Police, two police vehicles, $157,000. Police, marine vessel, large equipment, $50,000. Police, administrative vehicle, $62,000. Fire services, turnout gear, parentheses, PPE and equipment, $60,000. Fire marshal, deputy fire marshal vehicle, $75,000. Roads, bridges, and paving, dash, roads improvement, townwide parking improvements, $750,000. Vehicles and equipment, dash, autoloader, garbage truck, dash, 76 EL, $405,000. Building and infrastructure, repair town building roofs, $1,400,000. Buildings and infrastructure, plant stand, steep grant, town contribution, $95,000. Parks and building and equipment, dash, pickup truck and plow, $92,000. Parks and parks and equipment, dash, Toro Workman HDX vehicle, $32,000. Parks and park maintenance, erosion control plan from McCook Point Park, $50,000. Cost of issuance, $32,000. And this totals $3,735,000.
Do you want to take over for that? I'll start with section two. Okay.
Thanks.
Section two. Any of the estimated amounts for a project not required to meet the actual cost of such project may be transferred by the first selectman and the town treasurer to meet the actual cost of any other project. Section three. To meet said appropriations, $3,735,000 of bonds of the town or so much thereof as shall be necessary for such purpose shall be issued maturing not later than the maximum maturity permitted by the Connecticut, by the General Statute of Connecticut, revision of 1958, as amended from time to time the Connecticut General Statutes. Said bonds may be issued in one or more series as determined by the First Selectman and the Town Treasurer in the amount necessary to meet the town's share of the cost of the project determined after considering the estimated amounts of any and all state federal or other grants in aid of the project or the actual amounts thereof if this be ascertainable in the anticipated times of the receipt of the proceeds thereof, provided that the total amount of the bonds to be issued shall not be less than an amount which will be provided funds sufficient with other funds available for such purpose to pay principal of and the interest on all temporary borrowings in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds of said bonds outstanding at the time of the issuance thereof and to pay for the administrative, financing, legal and other costs of issuance of such bonds. The bonds shall be in the denomination of $1,000 or a whole multiple thereof to be issued in fully registered form, be executed in the name and on behalf of the town by the facsimile or manual signatures of the First Selectman and the Town Treasurer bear the town seal or facsimile thereof, be certified by a bank or trust company, which bank or trust company may be designated registrar and transfer agent, be payable at a bank or trust company and be approved as to their legality by Robinson and Cole LLP, Attorneys at Law of Hartford, Connecticut. The bonds shall be general obligations of the town and each of the bonds shall recite that every requirement of law relating to its issue has been duly complied with, that such bond is in every debt and other limit prescribed by law and that the full faith and credit of the town are pledged to the payment of the principal thereof and interest thereon. The aggregate principal amount of the bonds of each series to be issued, the annual installments of principal redemption provisions, if any, the certifying registrar and transfer agent and paying agent, the date, time of issue and sale and other terms, details and particulars of such bonds, including the rate or rates of interest, shall be determined by the First Selectman and the Town Treasurer in the best interest of the town in accordance with the Connecticut General Statutes. Section 4. Said bonds shall be sold by the First Selectman in a competitive offering or by negotiation in his discretion. If sold in a competitive offering, the bonds shall be sold at not less than the par and accrued interest on the basis of the lowest net or true interest cost of the town. A notice of sale or a summary thereof describing the bonds and setting forth the terms and conditions of the sale shall be published at least five days in advance of the sale in a recognized publication carrying municipal bond notices and devoted primarily to financial news and the subject of state and municipal bonds. If the bonds are sold by negotiation, the purchase agreement shall be approved and signed by the First Selectman and Town Treasurer. Section 5. The Town Treasurer is authorized to make temporary borrowings in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds of said bonds. Notes evidencing such borrowing shall be signed by the First Selectman and the Town Treasurer, have the seal of the town affixed and payable at a bank or trust company designated by the First Selectman, be approved as to their legality by Robinson and Cole LLP, Attorneys at Law of Hartford, Connecticut, and be certified by a bank or trust company designated by the First Selectman pursuant to Section 7-373 of the Connecticut General Statutes. They shall be issued with maturity dates which comply with the provisions of the Connecticut General Statutes governing the issuance of such notes. The notes shall be general obligation of the town and each of the notes shall recite that every requirement of law relating to the issue has been duly complied with and that such note is in every debt, I'm sorry, such note is within every debt and other limit prescribed by law and that the full faith and credit of the town are pledged to the payment of the principal thereof and the interest thereon. The net interest costs on such notes, including renewals thereof and the expense of preparing, issuing and marketing the notes, to the extent paid from the proceeds of such renewals or said bonds, shall be included as a cost of the projects. Upon the sale of the bonds, the proceeds thereof to the extent required shall be applied forthwith to the payment of the principal of and the interest on any such notes, not outstanding or shall be deposited with a bank or trust company in trust for such purpose.
One question before I read. You are making this motion, correct? If we read, can we second it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this is just, yeah.
Section 6. The town hereby expresses its official intent pursuant to Section 1.150-2 of the Federal Income Tax Regulation Title 26, the Regulations, to reimburse expenditures paid 60 days prior to and any time after the date of passage of this resolution in the maximum amount and for the projects with the proceeds of bonds, notes and other obligations, tax exempt obligations, authorized to be issued by the town. The tax exempt obligations shall be issued to reimburse such expenditures not later than 18 months after the late, late, after the later of the date of the expenditure or the substantial completion of the projects or such later date the regulations may authorize. The town hereby certifies that the intention to reimburse as expressed herein is based upon its reasonable expectations as of this date. The First Selectman or his designee is authorized to pay project expenses in accordance with this resolution pending the issuance of tax exempt obligations. Section 7. The First Selectman, Director of Finance and the Town Treasurer are hereby authorized on behalf of the town to enter into agreements where otherwise covenant for the benefit of bondholders to provide information on an annual or other periodic basis to the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, the MSRB, and to provide notices to the MSRB of events as enumerated in Securities and Exchange Commission Act Rule 15C2-12, as amended as may be necessary, appropriate or desirable to effect the sale of the bonds and notes authorized by this resolution. Any agreement or representations to provide information to the MSRB made prior heretofore are hereby confined, ratified and approved. Section 8. The First Selectman and Town Treasurer or either of them are hereby authorized on behalf of the town to enter into any other agreements, instruments, documents and certificates, including tax and investment agreements for the consummation of the transactions completed by this resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Can I second it even though I did the thing?
Go.
I'll second it then. We have Don second. Okay. Any, any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
This may be nitpicky, but this is a big amount of money. The initial amount that was said in the motion was settled out as $3,735,000. The actual amount, which came up later, is $3,375,000. The seven and the three got switched. I don't know if that's in the resolution or if that was just a, an error in recitation? Okay.
So we'll just correct it?
So it should be $3,735,000.
So the correct amount is what's in the resolution?
Wait, say it again.
Okay.
The correct amount is all in the resolution.
Okay.
We think that there's a transcription error in the agenda. It's 3,735, not 3,375.
Okay, so we should clarify.
We read it correctly.
We read it correctly.
Yes.
So there was a transposition on the, on the agenda and the correct amount is $3,735,000. Correct? So we're clear on that? Okay, thank you, Jason, for.
Math teacher skills coming in handy.
No, you know, I, very good, appreciate that. All right, done with that correction, do we have a second?
Don seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none? Any abstentions? Being none? Motion carries. Okay, great. So now we're on to special appropriation of item I.
Okay, let's see.
I have that.
Resolution making appropriations aggregating $7,285,000 for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of $7,285,000 in bonds of the town to meet said appropriations pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. One, the sum of $7,285,000 is hereby appropriated by the Town of East Lime, Connecticut, the town, for the planning, design, acquisition and construction of the various Board of Education capital improvements here, herein after listed, including costs of legal, administrative and related costs, the project. Project High School HVAC Component Recapitalization, $200,000. These are estimated amounts. High School A-Wing Windows Replacement Plan Phase 3, $100,000. High School Interior Door Replacement Plan Phase 1, $50,000. High School Exterior Door Replacement Plan Phase 3, $50,000. Middle School Building Envelope Repairs slash Sale Phase 3, $125,000. Middle School HVAC Recapitalization, $200,000. Middle School Roof Life Extension slash Restoration Lower South Area, $325,000. Lily B. Haynes Elementary School Roof Replacement Less the Northeast Wing and Portico, Aquatic Center Roof Replacement, $1,000,000. Districtwide Board of Education Technology and Other Capital Items, $500,000. Districtwide Board of Education Capital Projects Various, $250,000. Districtwide Board of Education Grounds Pickup with Plow, $65,000. Cost of Issuance, $57,500. And this totals $7,285,000. Section 2. Any of the estimated amounts for a project not required to meet the actual cost of such project may be transferred by the First Selectman and the Town Treasurer to meet the actual cost of any other project. Section 3. To meet said appropriations, $7,285,000 bonds of the town or so much thereof as shall be necessary for such purpose shall be issued maturing not later than the maximum maturity permitted by the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of 1958, as amended from time to time, parentheses, the Connecticut General Statutes. Said bonds may be issued in one or more series as determined by the First Selectman and the Town Treasurer in the amount necessary to meet the town's share of the cost of the project determined after considering, considering the estimated amounts of any and all state, federal or other grants in aid of the project or the actual amounts thereof if this be ascertainable in the anticipated times of the receipt of the proceeds thereof, provided that the total amount of bonds to be issued shall not be less than an amount which will provide funds sufficient with other funds available for such purpose to pay the principal of and the interest on all temporary borrowings in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds of said bonds outstanding at the time of the issuance thereof and to pay for the administrative, financing, legal and other costs of issuance of such bonds. The bonds shall be in the denomination of $1,000 or a whole multiple thereof, be issued in fully registered form, be executed in the name and on behalf of the town by the facsimile or manual signatures of the First Selectman and the Town Treasurer, bear the town's seal or facsimile thereof, be certified by a bank or trust company, which bank or trust company may be designated the registrar and transfer agent, be payable at a bank or trust company and be approved as to their legality by Robinson and Cole LLP, Attorneys at Law of Hartford, Connecticut. The bonds shall be general obligations of the town and each of the bonds shall recite that every requirement of law relating to its issue has been duly complied with, that such bonds is within every debt and other limit prescribed by law and that the full faith and credit of the town are pledged to the payment of the principal thereof and interest thereon. The aggregate principal amount of the bonds of each series to be issued, the annual installments of principal redemption provisions, if any, the certifying registrar and transfer agent and paying agent, the date, time of issue and sale and other terms, details and particulars of such bonds, including the rate or rates of interest, shall be determined by the First Selectman and the Town Treasurer in the best interest of the town in accordance with the Connecticut General Statutes.
I'll take it from there. Thank you. Okay. Section 4. Said bonds shall be sold by the First Selectman in a competitive offering or by negotiation in his discretion. If sold in a competitive offering, the bonds shall be sold at not less than par and accrued interest on the basis of the lowest net or true interest cost to the town. A notice of sale or a summary thereof describing the bonds and setting forth the terms and conditions of the sale shall be published at least five days in advance of the sale in a recognized publication carrying municipal bond notices and devoted primarily to financial news and the subject of state and municipal bonds. If the bonds are sold by negotiation, the purchase agreement shall be approved and signed by the First Selectman and the Town Treasurer. Section 5. The Town Treasurer is authorized to make temporary borrowings in anticipation, anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds of said bonds. Notes evidencing such borrowing shall be signed by the First Selectman and the Town Treasurer, have the seal of the town affixed, be payable at a bank or trust company designated by the First Selectman, be approved as to their legality by Robinson and Cole LLP, Attorneys at Law of Hartford, Connecticut, and be certified by a bank or trust company designated by the First Selectman pursuant to Section 7-373 of the Connecticut General Statutes. They shall be issued with maturity dates which comply with the provisions of the Connecticut General Statutes governing the issuance of such notes. The notes shall be, shall be general obligations of the town and each of the notes shall recite that every requirement of law relating to the issue has been duly complied with, that such note is within every debt and other limit prescribed by law and that the full faith and credit of the town are pledged to the payment of the principal thereof and the interest thereon. The net interest costs on such notes, including renewals thereof and the expense of preparing, issuing and marketing the notes, to the extent paid from the proceeds of such renewals of said bonds, shall be included in the cost of the projects. Upon the sale of the bonds, the proceeds thereof to the extent required shall be applied forthwith to the payment of the principal of and the interest on any such notes, not outstanding or shall be deposited with a bank or trust company in trust for such purpose. Section 6. The town hereby expresses its official intent pursuant to Section 1.150-2 of the Federal Income Tax Regulations Title 26, the Regulations, to reimburse expenditures paid 60 days prior to and any time after the date of passage of this resolution in the maximum amount and for the projects with the proceeds of bonds, notes and other obligations, tax exempt obligations authorized to be issued by the town. The tax exempt obligations shall be issued to reimburse such expenditures not later than 18 months after the date, I'm sorry, after the later of the date of the expenditure or the substantial completion of the projects or such later date the regulations may authorize. The town hereby certifies that the intention to reimburse as expressed herein is based upon its reasonable expectations as of this date. The First Selectman or his designee is, is authorized to pay project expenses in accordance with the resolution pending the issuance of tax exempt obligations. All right, let's see, we have, we have section 7. Why do section 7? Seven, eight, nine.
Section 7. The First Selectman, Director of Finance and the Town Treasurer are hereby authorized on behalf of the town to enter into agreements or otherwise covenant for the benefit of bondholders to provide information on an annual or other periodic basis to the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, the MSRB, and to provide notice to the MSRB of events as enumerated in Securities and Exchange Commission Exchange Act Rule 15C2-12, as amended as may be necessary, appropriate or desirable to effect the sale of the bonds and notes authorized by this resolution. Any agreement or representatives to provide information to the MSRB made prior heretofore are hereby confirmed, ratified and approved. Section 8. The First Selectman and the Town Treasurer or either of them are hereby authorized on behalf of the town to A, prepare schematic drawings and outline specifications for the project, and B, apply to the State of Connecticut for the, for and accept or reject a grant for the projects. Section 9. The First Selectman and the Town Treasurer or either of them are hereby authorized on behalf of the town to enter into any other agreements, instruments, documents and certificates, including tax and investment agreements for the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Will.
Thank you, Don. Any further discussion? I think we got it all right this time. All right, so those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Being none? Motion carries. All right. Let's see what's next. Okay, any old business? I don't see any. All right. Ex officio reports. Do we have any ex officio reports tonight?
I have stuff to go down the line. Just mention that our next, at our next meeting, we will be hearing a report from the group Climate Resiliency. We'll be getting their report and hearing from them on what they, what they recommend.
Okay. Thank you, Ozzy. Jason, anything? Jason, anything?
Yes, um, the Brookside Farm Museum has a couple of events coming up. At two o'clock on June ninth, they're going to be hosting a concert for a band, a folk band, at the barn. This will be the first in their summer series. And then on June twelfth, they'll be having a tea, which is a popular event for folks over at the Senior Center. Stars to Stem had a poetry event on Friday, and two poets, a local guy and a guy from out of town, read. It was a really nice event. I missed the Harbor Asset Management Shellfish Commission. I was away on a school field trip and did not get to go to that. I did, however, have the pleasure of going to a Board of Education meeting, and my gosh, those people just love each other, and they clapped, and they gave each other flowers and jam, and we got to do more of that on the Board of Education.
What?
Yeah, it was pretty awesome.
Not happening here.
That concludes my report.
Yeah, I've got some honey and peanut butter I wanted to give you after this.
I would love it. I would gladly accept it.
I didn't mention that. I looked in the car. Well, let's see. Yeah, I got a couple of, what do we got? Go to my Facebook account. Here we go. So, uh, yesterday, I participated in the tabletop terrorist attack scenario situation exercise at the Emergency Operations Center in East Line Public Safety Complex. You know, they do a pretty good job of trying to come up with little twists and turns to kind of throw you off, and you have a checklist and a plan, and you, you think you have things figured out, and there's always some, uh, little twist. But, you know, it's so important to kind of go through those scenarios and, and test our resiliency and, and how we figure out the get-arounds and the, uh, the problems, you know, using school buses to do things we hadn't really contemplated using them for, and, uh, anyhow, I'm glad I got to participate in it, and it was a great exercise, and, uh, they really do a great job over there.
I've participated in three of those, and halfway through, you really believe it's happening.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, they had, uh...
It's, the emergency calls come in and...
They, they had, like a news feed, it was called the Fake Next Net Network, you know, it's a channel, whatever, and, but anyhow, yeah, they do a pretty good job, it's pretty authentic, it makes you think, so, uh...
I thought also, just to kind of add to that, was, I think it helps how to work collaboratively with the group, because everybody has different skill sets, and, um, and, and that really helped, and I think you learn more the more you do it.
You really do. So, it really is, you know, some people think, oh, what are you wasting your time over there for? But no, it's not, it's an important exercise, and God forbid we ever really need to have those skills, at least run through those scenarios two or three times.
When was the last time we ever got any potassium pills?
Well, they're good for ten years, we found out.
Yeah, they're good for ten years, and I did ask, they're, they're at the, um, the, um, town clerk's office if, if people want them. That's what, that's what I was told.
Yeah, and then there was, in the scenario, there was a debate over, when, when do you give the pills to the actual emergency workers? And, uh, based on, you know, the, the conversations, I think they changed their position a little bit on, on, uh, what you should do. So, yeah, so it's, it's good, and, uh, and our reporter from the day was there, and, uh, had a great article today in the newspaper about it. So, that was that, and then, uh, Sunday, I was over at Karen's Share, you know, they were, there was a lot of volunteers that helped over at Karen's Share, and they had a presentation Sunday afternoon honoring some of the volunteers, and, uh, I got to be part of that, and I got to say thank you to those people that really spend a lot of time and effort, and, uh, they have great concern for the people that they serve, so... And what else? And, uh, as probably many of you know, we had a, uh, serious structure fire early Saturday morning, and I want to thank all the firefighters, first responders, EMS, the volunteers, the full-time, uh, fire service, and everyone that showed up, and, uh, response from other towns, uh, they really did a great job and, and limited the damage the best they could, and it was early in the morning, and they were all there, so we're very fortunate to have, uh, that service. And that's about it for me.
Um, okay, I attended on, on June fourth, Inland Wetland Agency meeting, and, um, basically the main, um, issue was they're working on the Inland Wetland Agency regulations, trying to finalize them, and they've been working on them for months, and they're, they're getting to the end now, so that was very encouraging, and they've been working very diligently on them. There's also something, uh, in June fourth, in the paper that I saw that I thought I should bring to light, was that East Line was granted, excuse me, a state grant of thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars for the, um, from the State Bond Commission for the design and planning of Darrow Pond Outdoor Education Conservation Recreation Center. I brought this up at the Inland Wa, Inland Wetland Agency, and, um, we received thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars, but I guess our, we had requested four hundred and ninety thousand, so, but I said, hey, it's still thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars, so, that's it for me.
As Mick Jagger would say, you don't always get what you want.
Yeah, but...
So, yeah. Who was it? Mick Jagger, wasn't it Mick Jagger? Yeah, I teased it. All right. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Don?
No, I, I'm off cycle last, since the last meeting, so my cycle starts next week with, uh, planning and, uh, Wellsco, and Anna's option to step in for me, because I'll be out next week.
Okay, good luck next week.
Thanks.
All right. I already really did my first selectman's report, it's kind of morphed into my ex officio report, so, okay. Uh, any, any communications? All right, any public comment? Being none, there's no selectman's response, that's good. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the June fifth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the Board of Selectment at eight fifty-five PM.
Do I hear a second? Second? Yeah, we got a second?
Yeah.
All right. All right, we're, we're adjourned. Oh, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Motion carries. We're off the record.